I'd like to call the Village Board meeting to order, please. If you would stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, welcome everyone and welcome to everyone watching at home. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Trustee Carter. Trustee Mariscal.
Present.
Trustee Kazam.
Present.
Trustee Gett.
Present.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Present.
Trustee DeVor.
Present.
Okay, we have a quorum. Item four is approval of the minutes from the Board of Trustees meeting on June 18th, 2019. I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any questions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Madam Clerk, any correspondence?
We do have a public meeting announcement. There is a public meeting for the proposed First Amendment to the Peoria Heights Tiff District Number Two. This meeting will be held on Tuesday, August 6th, at 5:30 PM here at Village Hall. And this meeting's purpose is to enable the village to advise the public taxing districts having real property in the redevelopment project area, taxpayers who own property in the redevelopment project area, and residents in the area as to the village's possible intent to prepare an amendment to the Peoria Heights Tiff District Number Two redevelopment plan and designate an amended redevelopment project area and to receive public comment.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
That's all.
Okay, on to announcements, just a couple. One, we had another successful movie night here last Saturday night at Tower Park. And as you know, we're trying to do more things here in the village that allows the citizens to come up and have no cost or low-cost events for families. So thanks to everyone on the staff who made that a success and to our sponsors at Richards Township that night. So there was no cost to the village or to folks who wanted to come up and enjoy that movie. The other announcement I have is that most of you are probably aware, but the exciting news that last Thursday, the governor was in town. And to back up, I got a call from Senator Kayler late last Wednesday night asking us to be at the IDOT facility on 150 on Thursday morning. And so I apologize for the late notice to the board, but Dustin and myself and Trustee Weisenberg and Trustee Kazam attended that event. And the governor announced that there would be $68.5 million for Galena Road improvements, which will be from roughly the Narrows to Gardner Lane, a brand-new road with turn lanes. And it will make this not only a safe road, which is our main concern, but this will open up a whole 'nother area in the village for development and especially homes and we hope affordable homes and affordable housing. So I know Trustee Kazam will get into that a little bit more in her report, but I cannot be grateful enough to Senator Kayler and Representative Gordon and their support of this project. So we have literally been working on this almost a year and a half. And it started in a meeting in Senator Kayler's office some time ago. And Dustin worked very hard along with House Levine to help us show the state what could occur in that corridor if the road was changed. And obviously, we know it'd be a lot safer, but some of the things that could benefit the region and Peoria Heights specifically, if the road had a turn lane and right turn lanes and traffic signals, et cetera, and bike lanes. So we're really excited about that. And I also had the opportunity to chat briefly with the governor. And the governor is certainly aware of all of the things, the good news happening here in Peoria Heights. And I specifically invited him here for a visit, and he accepted that. He's asked Senator Kayler to arrange that. So hopefully sometime over the next few months, the governor will come here and see firsthand of all of the things going on here in the village. Next, we would be at comments from the audience. If you'd like to address the board tonight, please give your name and address. And if you would make every effort to keep your remarks at five minutes or less, we would appreciate it. So comments from the audience are open.
Hi, my name is Barry Rolet. I live at 3823 North Monroe Avenue. And I'm speaking about the subway that's being placed down at War Drive in Monroe. First, let me say, I still believe that this is the wrong occupancy for the wrong site. It will pose traffic safety concerns due to backups and cut-throughs into the neighborhoods. It seems a high-dollar development is being quickly accommodated at the price of shoehorning and inappropriate occupancy into a less valued area of the village. This process has been fast-tracked possibly to a misstep. The site plan approved only last night was approved without even a current site plan available for people to review, as there were last-minute changes. And yet, the item is on the agenda less than 24 hours for approval, appearing that the result of last night was preordained. The site plan is presented now as far from perfect. It dumps all traffic back on Monroe for entry and exit. That was a deal-breaker for several of you a couple of weeks ago. That being said, I do think there were some reasonable compromises last night that may make the situation workable. To ensure those compromises are put in place, this project needs to slow down just a bit. One of the stipulations put on approval was that no traffic exiting the parking lot may turn right and travel north on Monroe. This protects the neighborhood from frustrated backed-up drivers that are delayed at the War Drive Monroe signals. After speaking with Chief Sutton last night after the meeting, he informed me that this requires an ordinance be passed by the board to give that stipulation the force of law, making it a ticketable offense. I request that the board table or defer this item tonight until the companion no-right-turn ordinance can be prepared and passed at the same time in conjunction with the site plan before the project breaks ground and occurs. Partnering these two actions to occur at the same time will slow this process to ensure that all plans to be approved are accurate, final, and are in front of all interested parties. It gives the board the opportunity to show that the concerns of all sides of the matter are valued equally. Thank you.
Thanks, Barry. Okay, next. Yes, welcome.
Hi, my name is Mike Russell. I live at 1209 East Euclid. And I'm talking concerning the idea of turning that into a no-parking zone. And that would mainly affect me and my family. First, I'd like to thank the mayor, the council, whichever one slipped a note in my mailbox last night letting me know that this vote was happening tonight. Otherwise, I would not have known. The problem is, my wife's lived in this house for 34 years. I've lived there 20. And this whole time, we parked on that street, never had a problem. Our family's grown. We have more vehicles now. But we park on one side of the street, trying to leave as much space as possible for people to get by. They say that there's a safety hazard that you can't see. Another option I would think that should be looked at would making that one way instead of no parking either direction. Not sure which would work better, but speed bumps in there to slow down traffic a little bit. But as far as people not being able to get through, our son is in a wheelchair and he rides City Lift. There's many times that he'll be getting on or off the bus, and our vehicles are parked on the other side of the street, and there's still cars going between the two of them. So there's plenty of room for people to get by. And then if you look on farther down the street, if you have people on opposite sides of the street parking in front of their houses, you still have to pull over and let somebody go. There's only room for one car. So there's not much difference there. I would say I would like to table this until other alternatives could be done besides a vote on making this no parking. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Jeanette Gruber. My husband and I live 3814 North Monroe, and I have my small business there as well. I'm a CPA. I think businesses are a good thing. I really like the idea of retaining subway in the town. I would share with you that I still have concerns about the density of the development that's being asked for at the corner of Monroe and War Memorial. And I would share with you that while I understand that there isn't a lot of incentive at this time to require green space, I would just like to acknowledge that it could be better done. I do understand that maybe one day we'll have an ordinance about that, and we don't right now. But I would like to share that the neighbors and I would like to have some green space reassured to us more than just the grass. I'm grateful for the grass and less is being taken away than the old proposal. The other thing is Dan Callahan, who's with Greg Florist, is out of town on a business trip. His assistant couldn't come tonight, so I was asked to express their interest in support of green space. And that we're all feeling a little nervous about the drainage. But at the same time, the main thing is that the plan has been improved so much from the last time that we feel more supportive. It's not quite the same as a, I don't know, endorsement, but I would share with you that we would really like to see a green space ordinance be considered. I know that's not on the agenda today, but even in our part of Peoria Heights that doesn't have the cute stuff, we want some too. So I would share with you, really like to make sure that that is entered into the record. There's another neighbor who didn't write a letter but feels the same way. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here. I appreciate all the neighbors being involved in this every step of the way. And I know you've been here for all the meetings, so thank you.
We appreciate the adjustments that were made.
Okay, anyone else?
My name is John Stout, and I live at 5022 North Montclair Avenue. I'm here representing three of my neighbors at 5011, 5022, and 5025. My concern is the speeders on this street. They come off Glen, they come up around the corner, and the first thing they do is they hit the, they hit it and they're flying down through there. There is a couple signs up there. There's a "coming back this way." There's a "slow" sign way down, and then with a cheetah tagger in it. But this means nothing to those people because they fly through there all the time. And one of these days, someone's going to get hurt. I have a five-year-old, a 10-year-old that I'm raising. My neighbors have a five-year-old. They live across the street from each other. And lo and behold, they're back and forth. And we watch them as much as we can, but there's that time that they get away from us. I've called the police department. I've talked to them. They have been very, very considerate with me. They even brought down a speed sign down there. It flashes on and off what the speed limit is. But to no avail, this is not doing anything. It may slow them down for a little bit, but it's not happening. I mentioned the fact about speed bumps, and they said Peoria Heights would not do that. I don't know. I know they got them over in Preston. But I think that's Peoria. I don't know. I would like to see something done because one of these days, we're going to be going to a funeral, and I sure don't want one of my kids. Thank you for listening.
Sir, I appreciate you being here tonight. I'll let Chief Sutton respond, but we love having people come under public comments, but I'm willing to meet with anyone anytime. You don't have to wait for a meeting. So if you give your contact to Chief Sutton, he and I will be happy to meet with you. But go ahead, Dustin, if you'd respond.
Yeah, I'll go with the mayor said. You don't have to wait till this platform to make your complaint heard. You can call me, and I'll give you my information after the meeting. I'm not sure who would have made that comment about the speed bumps. That would be board action. That's not something the police department decides.
Right.
But anyway, as far as enforcement goes, Montclair, I understand what you're saying. It is a major cut-through, as we have probably six or seven of those in the Heights, highly traveled. You also get a lot of traffic from Junction City to Humboldt to Montclair. That's where a lot of it comes as well. We do issue a lot of citations, but just like you said, once we're gone, once the speed trailer's gone, they start to ramp back up. So I will meet with you after the meeting if you stick around, and we can kind of go through that. You know, it's the same thing we're going through on Glen Elm. There's another cut-through.
Okay.
But I'll go into more detail kind of how we're handling that and what you can do regarding contacting me and moving forward, so.
Okay.
And if you're not able to stay around, sir, just call Village Hall tomorrow and...
That's all right. I'll be around.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I forgot something. I'm willing to not speak, but I forgot something.
All right.
Yeah. Sorry.
I just wanted to acknowledge that the, I thought it was really important to have the traffic coming out of the subway only go to the left towards War Memorial also. And I wanted to acknowledge that I agree with what Mr. Rolet said here, Barry, that pairing the two amendments would be better. I'm not opposed to the whole development, but the pairing of the two amendments would be better, or the ordinances, or whatever you call them. Forgive me, I haven't got my language correct. So I just wanted to acknowledge that that was something else I support.
Okay, thanks for...
Thank you.
Thanks for that. Anyone else? Public comment going once, going twice. Public comment is closed. We'll move on to trustee reports. The first is trustee Carter.
Thank you. I have a couple things, actually. We are getting ready to Silicoat Prospect, is that correct, Mike?
Right.
And that's coming up this week or next week?
Tuesday.
Next Tuesday. So I want to make everybody, you know, prepare. That Prospect is going to be a zoo for a while to make a detour, so you do a different route. That was my one topic. The other topic, do you want me to go over the silicoating now? Or are you going to do that later?
Yeah, we can do that later if you want.
Okay. I guess that's it. We'll do the rest when we get down here to the new business. But I definitely want everybody to remember that next week, Prospect's is going to be busy silicoating, so make a detour.
Thank you, Cheryl. You're finished for now, then? Till we get to your points?
Yeah.
Okay. Building Property Maintenance, trustee Mariscal.
Actually, I just found this out right before the meeting started, but you've talked to a company in, is it Carlock?
Carlock, yeah.
Regarding the stone that we talked about with the crack in it? Some alternates for, or alternatives for replacing that with something other than fixing the rock? So I don't know, did you want to, do you have the information to talk about it?
Well, Mike, take the microphone, sir. Everyone at home can hear as well, please.
Yeah, I got proposals and all that. I went to three different ones and actually went to Wilbert, Wilbert's in Germantown Hills. And that's where they make headstones and different things like that. But he was a little bit more than I wanted. Then a guy that I know works for Germantown Hills, does the streets and sewers over there, they got brand-new signs. I'm like, wow, it looks exactly like ours. So I'll hand these around. This is what he came up with. The guy on there, you probably know who he is, the TV show. So anyway, but it's Boulder Designs, and they're out of Carlock, Illinois. And to do both sides and do the same size as this, except it won't be a foot wide, it'll be more like eight inches wide, he come up with $6,125. Now, the guys I talked to to fix it, that's what we wanted to do, go a little cheaper route, but he said it wouldn't last. It's cracked on both sides. He said it could last a month, it could last a year. So this was the cheapest one. I went from $6,000 to $8,000 to get one made. This was the one I came up with. So it's brand-new, and the, look at the pictures, the guy's real good. I don't know if you go to Germantown Hills, but they got, he made quite a few signs for them over there, so.
So were we totally against going, I mean, are we wanting to go back with this rock-looking type thing? Or I know that we had discussed maybe doing some kind of a sign that we could put information on and events on, or it would light up, or whatever we wanted to do. Do we, is everybody wanting a sign like this?
I think the stone sign would look fine. Out here, I was really talking about where we change it for the meetings and things. Would take that sign and do this? And we are working on that also, just to get a price.
We're still waiting on that information, and this will be an item on the August 6th agenda. That's why we haven't brought everything else out, because we're still waiting on a couple quotes. And I know trustee Carter brought something else up about the other sign, so we're still waiting on that. That's why we've moved this off tonight's agenda to August 6th, so.
So are we thinking anyway about two signs then? Or do we just want to do...
I would think we need a recommendation. I would ask you to work with Mike and Dustin to identify recommendations to the departmental meeting and take it from there.
Okay. I can do that.
Both on an informational side. And to let everyone know, the reason we're addressing this issue, when Tower Park was last redone, it was a gift from several families in the village that paid for nearly everything in Tower Park. And that stone out there was part of the update of Tower Park, well, almost from the beginning. And I know that's a very expensive stone, but from the beginning, it started to crack. And now it's at a critical point, and I have a lot of people actually call me over that stone to see what we're doing about it. So we're trying to, and it's not just an easy fix, as we know. It's much more complicated because of the stonework than we thought. So thanks to both of you for trying to find a solution to this, but we'll look forward to your recommendations, trustee Mariscal, to the committee meeting when we get to that.
Sure.
And you still have the floor, Diane?
That would be all I have.
Okay, thank you. All right, next, economic and community development, trustee Kazam.
Well, I just want to reiterate everyone's excitement about the $68.5 million allotted to Galena Road going forward. It's really unbelievable that we received that grant, that Peoria Heights received such a large chunk of it. And it's, as the mayor stated, safety is our paramount issue. And we will be working really closely with IDOT to make sure that lots, all the concerns are addressed going forward. And also, we will be engaging and communicating with House Levine to determine the best way to develop the area for future development possibilities down there. It's our only, it's the Heights' only direct contact with the river, and the river is a huge asset for us, both commercially and recreationally. We have a tremendous amount of green space down there, so I can see a lot of potential in the future. And then just to remind everyone, this will tie in with the bridge grant that we received on the Murray Baker, which will begin and be completed within the next four years. And that's a $35 million grant, I think. And that will include a 14-foot bike lane. So it's all really wonderful news. I don't know if you have anything to add to that?
Oh, you did fine. Thank you. Anything else on both?
That's it.
Okay.
For now.
All right, administration, trustee Gett.
Yeah, I just want to tell everybody to review the email Chief Sutton sent you about our building permits, what we charge. Sarah and Jack worked hard on putting scenarios together so you can compare apples to apples because not all municipalities charge the same way. So if you want to review what the email he sent you, and we'll discuss it August 6th so we can figure out where we're going to go with our fees. We're lower than some, well, and right about the same. We're not above anybody, so if you would just review the email he sent you. Sarah and Jack did a really good job of working on this to get it together so you can compare apples to apples better than just trying to figure out how we should go about doing this. So that's all I got to say.
Yeah, I would echo what trustee Gett said. There's a couple things to consider. I sent the email out last week. There's just a, there's a short, a small increase, large increase. There's also another formula that a lot of municipalities use. So if you could just review that. Again, we'll discuss it on August 6th and move forward, whatever the board's pleasure is, so. And again, Sarah and Jack did a great job of compiling this information.
Thank you. What else? Trustee Gett, anything else?
That's all.
Okay. Okay, fire, trustee Weisenberg.
Thank you, mayor. I have nothing to report.
Okay. Police, trustee DeVor.
We have a neighborhood watch meeting coming up, July 29th, at 6:30, and that's here at Village Hall. And then also, on September 7th, the police department will be testing to update our, like, recruit list. So we have to keep a recruit list that's fresh for every two years of officers that we could potentially hire. So we will be doing that on September 7th.
Thank you. Okay. On to old business. Approval of ordinance 2019-1596, an ordinance resisting parking on that portion of Euclid Avenue between Kingman Avenue to Park Place in the village of Peoria Heights. Trustee DeVor.
Usually.
I would ask for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2019-1596.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, go ahead, Sarah.
We just discussed in a couple previous meetings about the safety issue of the parking on that corner of Euclid. I feel that we have had discussions that some of us did reach out to neighbors and that there really, no one had really come forward with complaints until today. So, and I thought that we had discussed that we thought this was for the safety of the community. So I don't know if we want to have more discussion on it or how we feel about it.
Well, if you're finished, we'll ask for everyone else to weigh in.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments?
My, the only thing I have to say is, you know, living on, over on Glen Elm, we have people that park on both sides of the streets over there as well. And it's a matter of one pulls over while one comes through, and then the other goes through. So, and I did drive down this street, and I noticed, you know, that it's tight like that as well. But I think just to be fair to those that live over there, if you're going to do it on that street, there's a whole lot of streets that have the same problem. If he's, you know, if the residents over there are willing to stay on the one side, or just like on Glen Elm, we have a corner, and we, and we've yellowed that so nobody can park on that corner, which was a great idea. But I think it does warrant a little bit more discussion as to what can be done over there. What's going to happen when the restaurant opens? You know, is all of that going to even get more congested over there? He might say they can use the parking lot now, but when, if they start coming out of customers, are they still going to be able to park there in that parking lot? I don't know. I just, I don't, I don't know that I personally am ready to vote on this yet without talking about it a little bit more, but that's...
We can hear what everyone else has to say. A motion to send back to committee is always in order. So if at some point you care to make that motion, you get a second, we'll talk about that. Anyone else?
Yeah. And on my way to Village Hall today, I drove down Durrie, and there was cars parked on both sides of the street. Well, I had to stop and let a car come through before I continued down Durrie. So the Euclid scenario is not much dissimilar than almost every street in the Heights. So I think if we're, and, you know, on the weekend, when the businesses are booming in the Heights, good luck getting through Durrie without having to stop because, you know, cars are parked all the way down that street. So I don't understand what the urgency is with Euclid because it happens everywhere. It's absolutely everywhere. When this ordinance was originally brought to the board, I had brought a concern that it would burden the families on that street, especially during holidays and family gatherings. When these houses were built, they were built in previous generations where families only had one car. Now families have multiple cars, and that certainly isn't the fault of the residents on Euclid, that their properties aren't designed for multiple vehicles. So I think it does warrant more discussion as well. I would like to see maybe a partial ban, maybe on the, what is it, the west side of the street, allowing the residential side of the street to continue to use that street. I think that would alleviate traffic issues. It would make it much better than Durrie is right now. So no, I would like to postpone this indefinitely, just so the board can continue to discuss it.
Well, I think one of the differences is on Euclid, it's on a curve. That's a little bit different than Durrie, but you're... That's a little bit different than Durrie, but you're right. I mean, nobody knows traffic patterns more than me. In 25 years here, we have a lot of different issues in a lot of different neighborhoods, but that issue with the curve is a concern. Like trustee Mariscal just said, we did it in her neighborhood on the, beyond the west side, and that did correct the problem. But the difference is there, I think, is just, and it's no fault of the residents over there. It just happened to be on a curve, and it is tough when you are pulling in there, and it's only going to get busier. I can't foresee what the future holds as far as development. I do know that when I went through the presentation here at Village Hall, you know, Mr. Blickenstaff did state that that parking lot could be utilized over there for parking, for the residents. So I'm not sure if, you know, he would continue to feel that way, but he did state that during his presentation. But that's my, that's my stance on it as police chief. It is, I've also, I was approached here at Village Hall by some residents that supported the ban, so I've heard, I've heard both sides directly and then here tonight. But we also had somebody speak about it who works for the village, lives over there, that travels it heavily, and had the same concern. But you're right, trustee Weisenberg, there are a lot of, a lot of streets in Peoria Heights that are congested when parked on both sides, but I think given that curve, it's a little different, different animal, so. But that's my, that's my opinion.
I agree with you, Chief.
If I could just add one other thing that I forgot to mention. Looking at the, the traffic patterns on those streets, there are several alternate routes that motorists can take to avoid the congestion without, without burdening them. There are no alternative parking options for the residents on that street. So I do believe it places an undue burden on those residents to ban parking right in front of their residences.
Well, if I had my way, I would, I would probably start with about five different cut-through routes that I'd like to, that I would like to address. In fact, we heard one tonight, so, and I know that we also have another one from previous meeting, so I understand that. But the fact is, there are just a lot of cut-through traffic in the Heights, so I'm not sure that's going to change, but we will try to please at our best.
I don't disagree with you, Brandon. I think that we do need to talk about this a little bit further. I think that possibly one side of the street ban makes more sense, and then if we have to revisit it at a later date, that would be good. But what I do want to say is, I don't think anyone should abuse the privilege, like keeping cars parked indefinitely in the same spot, or in the, you know, in that. That should be taken into consideration too, for neighbors and residents of the neighborhood.
And I think that's how we got here. We didn't, the chief just didn't decide to make a recommendation to ban parking in that block. It's complaint-driven, and there are other neighbors who maybe don't want to publicly speak, who brought it to the attention of the police department, that this is a problem.
Yes.
And he brought it to the committee.
And that needs to be acknowledged.
The committee, sent it here, so. Trustee Gett, did you have?
Well, I've heard, I agree with the chief. We have an employee here at the village that lives over there, and his recommendation was to close them, close both sides down. It's on the curve. That's the big thing. It's on that curve, and it's hard, I mean, you come down in my neighborhood, it's really tight, but it's a straightaway, and people can see each other. But that curve, I've made deliveries in my job, rooftop deliveries, and it's really tough to get in and out there, so, I mean, I think it's a good decision to, for the ban.
Okay, so, I mean, there is a motion on the floor, and if someone wants to make a motion to send it back to committee, I've heard a few of you express that desire. If you want to make that motion, we can see if that has support.
Sure. I move that we postpone indefinitely ordinance 2019-1596.
Well, I think that, to, to delay it indefinitely, that you can't make that.
We want to.
You might as well vote the thing down then, but send it back to committee for study. That's, that's what needs to be done. But a motion to indefinitely suspend something, let's just vote it down then, if that's what you want to do.
I think we have to come up with a solution. If we, if we make a motion to postpone it indefinitely, we would never address the issue.
So if I understand, if I table it, that means to address something more urgent at that time. So how would I make a motion to?
To send it back to committee for further discussion.
Okay. I move to send ordinance 2019-1596 back to committee.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, now, discussion on the amendment only. Any discussion on the amendment?
I would like to take a look.
Or, I mean, the motion.
I would like to at least take a look at just one side of the street, making no parking on the one side, if that would be of any help at all. The residents, or if you have neighbors that, you know, would like to come up and talk about it as well, or you know anyone over there that would like to talk about it, we would appreciate hearing from them. Would it be a, if we did both sides of the street, where you couldn't park on either side, would you, would that cause a huge problem for you? Where would you then, would you park?
Let's keep our remarks to the board, because we've already had public comment, and not all the neighbors are here to ask that question, so please, let's talk about sending this back to committee.
Okay, then I would like to send it back to the committee to discuss one side, possibly making one side.
We already have that motion. And a second.
So now we're discussing the motion to defer.
We have a motion on the floor to send it back to committee for study. It's been seconded. That's what we're talking about right now.
Right.
Are you in favor of that or against it?
Oh, I see. Well, it's time to vote then.
After we have discussion on it, we'll vote.
I'm in favor.
Put it, vote, it's good to.
All right, listen, I'll call the question. So, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Carter?
Okay, we're going to have to figure out what, I'm so lost here, I have no idea what you guys want to do.
It's to send it back?
So we're going to table this.
No, we're going to send it back to committee for further discussion.
But Mayor, can we set a date? Can it be on next month's agenda?
Yes.
This is something, okay.
That's what I would expect, so the next.
Yeah. We have to come to some sort of resolution on this.
And that committee chairman, which would be trustee DeVor, can immediately begin talking with neighbors or preparing for that meeting and working on that, so.
I'm available to talk to anybody who would, you know, any of the neighbors that would like to discuss it. I definitely would love to hear what you have to say about it.
So we're looking to put this back to August 6th?
Well, we're calling, you know what, we're calling the question right now, so we're in the process of.
I want to know what day. Are we talking, are we talking on August 6th, or are we talking the 21st?
Why?
23rd?
So upset.
So, if that's what we're looking to move it back to, is that what we're going to vote on?
Yes.
Okay.
What am I voting on?
The motion to send it back to committee for further discussion.
Okay, aye, yes, whatever.
Trustee Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Kazan?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Next, we'd be at new business. Approval of the drainage lining project located by D's Autobody, completed by J.C. Dillon, in the amount of $71,142. Trustee Carter?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the drainage lining project.
And a second?
Second.
Go ahead, trustee Carter.
Okay, so, it looks like Herman and Associates, they received two bids. One from J.C. Dillon and the other from Here Construction. The Here, the engineer estimate project was $65,000. Both of these bids, as you can see, is above that. So Herman's is, looks like they're wanting to move forward with J.C. Dillon at $71,142.
I have just your trust Herman and Associates.
Oh, okay.
Is there any questions?
I was looking for Alicia. So, does anybody have any questions on that?
And if this sounds familiar, this came in front of the board once before, but the bids came in a lot higher. That's why they had to go back out for rebids, and this is money coming out of the BDD. Now, the last BDD meeting we had, they didn't have a quorum, and I know Kevin Shields couldn't be here today, but there was no opposition to this expenditure, so I told him I would pass that along. So even though they didn't have a quorum, they were all in favor of it, as they were the first time, so.
Do you remember what that came back, would you remember what that came back at, when it was higher?
Jessica, I believe it was close to nine, was it 90-some thousand, or close to 100,000? Yes, so.
So what's changed that it's lower? Are we, like, taking work out, or what?
No, we revised the discussion.
Would you please come up, take the microphone, so everyone at home can hear what's going on?
The second time that it was bid, another material was allowed, in addition to the material that was bid out the first time, which allowed J.C. Dillon to bid. They only used the one type of material, so allowing the more competition brought the prices down for the second time around. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Thank you, Jessica. Okay, anyone else? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Carter?
Aye.
Trustee Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Kazan?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Next, rejection of bid submitted June 27th for pavement marking on Prospect Road by RoadSafe in the amount of $67,972. Trustee Carter?
Okay, I make a motion to reject bid submitted June 27th for pavement marking for $67,972.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, go ahead, Cheryl.
Okay, so, this also came in, it's the marking of the pavement. So this came in way higher than Alicia ever dreamed that it would come in. So what we did is, we're rejecting the pavement part of it and sent it out to bid again. And, believe it or not, I mean, I talked to her, there's like, nobody here Peoria-wise that has any competition. So the person that actually bitted it, we went, he came back, and I think he like doubled or tripled the amount. Do you remember, Jessica?
Almost tripled.
Almost tripled, which was ridiculous. So Herman and Associates reached out to the Chicago area to see if there was anybody up there that is willing to come down here to give us a bid. And that's, that's why we're rejecting. So I make a motion to reject, because my next one is the actual bid that came in.
Okay, discussion? All right, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Carter?
Aye.
Trustee Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Kazan?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Next, approval of a quotation for pavement marking on Prospect Road completed by AC Pavement Striping in the amount of $24,190. Trustee Carter?
I make a motion to approve the quotation of pavement.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, go ahead, trustee Carter.
Okay, so this is where she went back out and rebid, and we got somebody from Chicago to come down and to give us a bid for pavement marking for $24,190. It's pretty sad that we had to get somebody from Chicago to come down here to Peoria to do this, but we have a timeframe when you do that silicoating, so I make a motion to approve it. Anybody got any questions?
Okay, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Carter?
Aye.
Trustee Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Kazan?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Next, approval for phase number five of well 11 rehab, completed by Kahoy Pump Service, not to exceed the estimated cost of $44,898. Trustee Carter?
Okay, so I make a motion to approve phase number five on well 11.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, go ahead, trustee Carter.
Okay, so we had a problem with well 11, is that correct?
Yep.
And it had to be redone, or going to be redone.
Yep, so I, this is phase number five, that's in front of you tonight. Phase one through four has been in front of you all. The most recent was phase three and phase four, about a month ago. Phase three and phase four, the work that was to be completed, or that was completed, was the well walls or column shafts were cleaned, and all the buildup was taken off of them. Once that buildup was removed, it was found to have several holes and cracks, which made the well pretty much inoperable and useless. The two options are to abandon the well and no longer use it, which would put us down to four wells instead of five, or to, the contractor suggesting a reline, which is basically, it's like relining a pool. They would put a liner down inside the shaft of the, of the well. That would give us a functioning well long-term at a much cheaper cost than replacing and being, or building a new well. A new well nowadays probably costs you about $350,000. They will do this for $44,898. I've worked with Stephanie. Stephanie, this will be paid using the infrastructure and maintenance fee fund, correct?
Correct.
After that, $44,000 is paid, there will be $41,000 remaining. Just to refresh your guys' memory, the infrastructure and maintenance fee fund is a $5 fee that is charged to each water customer service, water service customer monthly, and that fund has to be used for specific things like this type of project.
Maintenance. Not that I'm against it, but I'm just wondering what the impact is if you went from four to fi, or from five to four?
Right now, it would be very, a huge problem, because we have five wells, and three of them are down. The issue is that the wells in the past have kind of been out of sight, out of mind. They've been running, they were not maintained, there was no updates to them, and now we're, now we're paying for that. The life of a well could be 40 years if it's engineered right. We have one that was built in 2010 that was engineered wrong, can't use it unless it's under emergency circumstances. So you've got a well you paid $300,000 for that you can't use unless you absolutely have to. So right now, eliminating that one well is a huge, would be a huge mistake.
Why is the third well down? So we have this one down for then?
Yeah, we have, we have, this is well 11, this is the one that we're currently talking about. We have well 12, which was built in 2010, that, I was going to have looked at this budget year, but now with all this going on, this is going to be pushed back. I was told that that was engineered wrong, and it pumps dirty water. As far as why, that's what I'm hoping to find out. The other one is well number seven, and that has failed. Every month, we have to provide samples to the EPA to basically prove that we're providing quality, safe drinking water, and that has failed the last two samples. As to why, I don't know yet, because it's been kind of from the back burner until this one is figured out, yeah. The, as you can see, the, the maintenance on these things is not cheap. I mean, it's, it's expensive, and unfortunately, I would assume due to budget concerns, that's why they kind of fell by the wayside, so.
How many wells are required to maintain service?
It all depends on your demand of water. During the summertime, we use two wells. We pump, our maximum pumpage is about 1.2 million gallons a day, and during the wintertime, we use one well, and we use about 500,000 gallons a day in the wintertime. Our average daily pumpage is about 800,000 gallons a day. Our water pumpage is based on the country club. When they water their golf course, our water usage goes up. So it's not a bad thing to have wells in reserve in this type of situation, so.
Agreed.
And I do still plan on doing that water tour. I've been extremely busy, so I apologize.
I was just about to ask.
I do plan on, I promise you.
It's really informative. It's really interesting.
Yeah, I did, I did take, I did take Beth on it, and it's very informative. I promise I will do that.
All right.
Stephanie, how, can you tell me what the, like, budget for the year is for that fund?
Okay, so, actually, if you look in your finance packet, there is, on page 19, it's Okay, so actually, if you look in your finance packet, there is, on page 19, it's going to be the very last forward-facing page of your packet. This is the budget for the INF Maintenance Fund. We typically bring in about $160,000 in revenue this year for the budget. I have budgeted[504.21][504.24]$235,751. What that is designed to do is every year, we look at what is in reserves in the account and what we plan to bring in, and we zero it out so that if necessary, the board has the option of spending that budget, or that fund down to zero if there are, like in this case, an emergency. So right now, there's $75,000 in reserves. That fund is obligated to make a $10,000 loan payment every month. We typically bring in about $12,000 a month. So Mr. Marfell and I have spoken about this. Essentially, I would recommend to the board that they bring that fund down to a balance of no less than about $40,000 in reserves, just to kind of be sure that there are funds there to make that loan payment for a couple of months in case the cash flow gets a little, a little weird. This particular payment will not bring that, that, that kind of threshold of where I would be concerned about it. So we believe that there are funds for this if the board desires to do so. If the board does not want to approve it out of there, then we would start looking at the water budget. There is the possibility of finding some funds there as well. We could split the bill if that's what the board decided to do, and take half of it out of the water budget and half of it out of the INF Fund. They do have money for equipment outlay and also some main improvements, but the majority of the funds, I would look to the INF Fund.
Okay, anyone else? Call the roll.
Trustee Carter.
Aye.
Trustee Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Kazam.
Aye.
Trustee Gutt.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
Trustee DeBoer.
Aye.
All right, that passes. Thanks Dave. Next, approval of a site plan application by Gary Elkemp as trustee of the GLK Land Trust for construction of a proposed commercial building located at 1001 East War Memorial Drive. Trustee Kazam.
I move to approve the site plan application by Gary Kemp.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, go ahead, Trustee Kazam.
Well, I attended the zoning board meeting yesterday, and I think we've heard from some of the residents in that area this evening. Mr. Kemp has, well, let's go back a little bit. We're moving the subway from its current location to a new location along War Drive. This has been, we've heard about this a lot over the last few months. And so there's some of the neighbors in the area on Monroe are concerned about safety and also garbage elimination and trucks. That's really what we heard last night and then again today from the audience. Mark may remember more clearly last night exactly what the vote numbers were, because there was a lot of conversation. It was a little bit confusing. And there was some, you know, there were some yays and some nays on this. So do you remember the exact vote, Mark?
Yeah, it, um, yeah, the overall vote was six to three. The, what I've got the ZBA doing now is taking individual votes on all of the five elements that are required for approval of a variance. And so some of those were closer, but the overall vote was six to three. So it did receive favorable vote, but it did have stipulations. No deliveries, no trucks in the alley, and no right turns out of the parking lot. So that would be no northbound traffic from the premises on Monroe.
Counsel, you have the floor. Would you just explain that the decision tonight is
Yes.
The 10-day limit?
Right, right, right. So under our ordinance, site plan approval is heard by the ZBA. The recommendation to approve or deny is passed to this board for final approval. However, the public does have 10 days to file an objection. So since it just happened last night, our approval tonight would be really subject to potential objections from the public.
And if the board does approve this, we would hold a hearing to hear that appeal if it came?
If, if an objection is filed, we would have to hold, that's occasionally, if you remember, we've had meetings at 5:30, you know, right before the six o'clock meeting to entertain those types of objections, correct?
Thank you. So, you, Trustee Kazam?
I just have a couple more comments. One comment is that I felt that in listening to all of the conversation yesterday, obviously, safety is paramount to the village, and we definitely want to keep that in mind in the forefront all the time. I also felt that Mr. Kemp was very accommodating when different suggestions were, were offered about deliveries. And so I thought really needs to be taken into consideration. And just as an aside, after being on the zoning board for a year, whether it was deliberate or coincidental, the positioning of this subway on this lot actually falls under something that we're trying to do in these overlay districts. So I don't know, we all have the packet here in front of us, but this building actually faces Knoxville with no parking in front of the building, but only.
War Drive.
Pardon me, yeah, War Drive, sorry. With no parking in front of the building, it does have a drive aisle for a drive-through. And so that pushes the parking behind the building, which I think is a more aesthetic way to look at things. It's also new construction in that area. There are a lot of older buildings, charming but older in that area, and I think that definitely needs to be noted. And as a huge proponent of the green space, which seems to be, you know, a buzzword lately, even though I love green space, there is a lot of grass in this plan. And there currently, I drove about three times around that property today, there's a current, like, kind of roundabout in the middle that has grass and a light and all this types of, type of thing. That would be eliminated, but realistically, you would never see that from War Drive anyway, because this new structure is actually facing War Drive, and then you only see the parking lot from Monroe. And I assume that's all going to, maybe Mr. Kemp can speak to this, but that's going to be all new construction and possibly new pavement and striping and, or maybe concrete even. So, okay. I don't know. Can we invite him to speak to it?
We'll get to that.
Okay.
Are you finished?
Yeah.
Okay. So any questions for Trustee Kazam, and then we'll get to Mr. Kemp, let him come up and?
Okay, so when we are, because I didn't make the meetings last Monday, so when you come down, you're only going to have one entrance, and that's coming down Monroe. Yes. You're going to turn in Monroe, or turn off of Monroe, go in the parking lot, and you're going to go around the building, you're going to take a left. And then you're going to come back out the same way you came in. Correct. But you're, what we're saying is we're not allowing anybody to take a left there. You have to take a right. No delivery truck. So, you know, people going there to get a sandwich can, can come out and go left at the light. So we're gonna, we're gonna make, okay, I'm sorry, I have a problem with that. So we're gonna make a typical regular car, whatever, paying person can go right or left out of that parking lot, but we're going to have a big truck, delivery truck, only take a right and go to go through all the residents. Only not, they cannot go down Monroe, that's what the residents.
They can only go left.
They can only go left to the right.
So they can only go left.
Yes, okay, that's right.
Yeah.
So they can go left.
They can go left.
Not, yeah.
I'm sorry, I think that they said that they want all traffic to go left. Maybe I misunderstood.
That was my understanding too, all traffic.
No cars could go to.
All traffic.
There's only one stipulation that they would not, no cars could go to the right, they could only go to the left.
That is, will be very difficult to enforce.
Yeah.
I don't know what, you lived in the neighborhood.
I'm sorry, that's important to me, explaining what it, how it was.
Yeah. Because if I go in there, I surely don't want to take a left and go all the way around to get to my house. That's a block up the street. That, that's not.
We're adopting the site plan, is that not correct, Counsel?
It is.
That's a side issue, correct?
Well, arguably it is, although, you know, traffic and congestion was one of the concerns, and that is.
No, and I'm not minimizing that, but I'm trying to focus on what's before us.
Right, right. That, that was a stipulation for site plan approval. It was conditioned on.
That was one of their?
No right turns out, and that, so that's what's technically before the board.
That was their finding of fact?
Correct.
Okay, then I stand corrected.
Yeah.
Thank you.
How are we going to enforce that?
Well, first, first of all, that's a recommendation from zoning to us. I mean.
We can change what they've asked for.
Mm-hmm.
What is the estimated increase of traffic to Monroe?
Well, Mr. Kemp can speak to that. You know about your customer numbers. Is, did you say 200?
Gary, why don't you come forth and?
You know, I'm here, but Dave, the subway owner, is here, and he might be able to better suit the answer for that. So if we maybe want to call Dave up here real quick.
Dave, come on up, please.
Well, I think it's going to be more traffic going, since he's moving on War Drive to Prospect.
I can give you numbers, Dave Hannah, I'm sorry, based on where we're at right now, closest guess. And we average anywhere from 140 to 180 transactions a day. That doesn't necessarily mean vehicles. That's, and that's how we get customer counts, yeah. So people come together, you know how it is. So you might say that 40% of those vehicles are going to be drive-through vehicles, so in and out. And then the other 60% would be people that would actually park and come in and leave. So you're talking, the best guess, 160 people. So maybe 100, 120 cars.
And just to, like, put it in perspective for the rest of the council, there, that is a commercial development. I mean, there's the commercial, Morton Rental is just to your, just on the side there, and there are trucks actually for rent there. You know, I mean, so that, there is a lot of buzz right there. I mean, it's, this would not be any different use. This is.
Yeah, I'd just like to clarify one thing. I know that Gary explained all this last night, but I just wanted to reaffirm what he told you, because I did some checking on this today myself when he asked me specific questions. And I called, Cisco is our delivery company. We've been using them. You see them here. They probably deliver to 50% of the restaurants up and down the street already. Same people we've been using for 30 years, up and down the street here. Same-sized truck that we get today here would be the same thing over there. They're regular refrigerated trucks, anywhere from 45 to 48 feet. They're not the big over-the-road trucks, which are 55 to 58 feet. Not quite the same size. The gentleman, he, our scheduled delivery is Friday mornings between 8:00 and 10:00. Takes him by half an hour. He wants to get in and get out of there as fast as he can. So you're talking, I mean, on an average, maybe half an hour of disrupted time. And they work with us really well. So if you guys, if that's part of the deal, which it sounds like, we don't want them driving through the neighborhood, that doesn't make any sense either. And you got a light right there, so for him to get in and out of there, it makes perfect sense for him to use that light at Monroe. And they'll accommodate us with.
I think an important issue too, Dave, is to point out, is you're only talking about one delivery a week, aren't you?
A week, yeah, once a week. And we don't, there's no other, there's no, everything comes on one truck for us, so it's not one from different, it's, that's it. And that's, it's been that way for, we've been there for 30 years here, so it's, there's no difference.
Would you speak to your most, your busiest times? Like, what time of day?
It's lunchtime.
It's lunch, okay.
Sure, by far.
So, for example, the school across the street, those kids presumably?
That's our slowest time in the afternoon, quite honestly.
In school.
Yeah. And the school gets out is our absolute slowest time of the day. So it kind of fits as far as best-case scenario. It's going to be, there's going to be more traffic. There's no one going to say there's not. But it really is best-case scenario for that type of business. We're not a people factory like the McDonald's or the Starbucks where it's just an endless, that's not, that's not our, as far as neighborhood-friendly, if you're going to go with a bigger brand, whereabouts neighborhood-friendly you're going to get.
Wouldn't you say the percentage are going to go left anyway to the light?
I would sure think so, because that makes all the sense in the world.
That would just be my guess, and I mean, I, you know, I don't have any statistics to back that up, but.
And I, it just makes common sense. But you're going to have, let's face it, we know people are going to see a line. They're going to turn right. That's, you're going to have that. So be a fool to say that wouldn't happen. But the majority of people are going to go left. They want to get on War Drive anyway. So. But you're going to have neighborhood traffic too. You, I mean, I hope you have neighborhood traffic, so.
Right. I hope you have success from the school.
Are you thinking that the trucks are going to want to pull in? I'm trying to understand where the delivery are going to make.
Okay, this is, I can give you educated opinion as well. Just over here at the store, okay, it's a terrible parking lot where we're at, right? Okay? This is better, believe it or not. But they pull down the street, what's the side street there, Dustin?
Side of the.
Side of, okay, they pull down, he backs in at the drive-through. So they just back the truck right up at the back of the building, empty it into the back door, and they pull out.
So you think they'll pull in Monroe, pull in your lot?
That's what I think.
And then pull right back out?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's, and again, and perfect, I can't guarantee you everything I tell you is 100% factual, because there are going to be bumps in the road with delivery guys, that's just how it is. But it's a slow time of morning, you know, it's between 8:00 and 10:00 generally there, that's what they do, in and out, half an hour. So.
Dave, have you done any projections on the increased traffic at the new location?
It's a really, I mean, obviously, yeah, because you're hoping, I mean, right?
Yeah.
But it's a really hard call, because, I mean, I can sit and give you a whole bunch of different answers. I hope that we're going to do 10% more business over there. And I'd like that to be conservative, but we're going to, I mean, let's face it, we've got a lot of foot traffic where we're at right here, because the locals can walk there. We're going to lose that, right? And there's some traffic difficulties there that, that are going to make, you know, we're going to maybe lose a few customers because of that. But there are definitely traffic difficulties where we're at. So, but the, the difference in traffic is going to come from War Drive. The traffic count's huge there compared to where we are.
So going from 180 to 250 wouldn't be out of the ballpark?
Man, that would be great. So.
Was the approval from the ZBA contingent on the no right-hand turn? Would they have proved it without it? Their, their recommendation was to approve contingent on that. And that's the recommendation to this board. This board's free to accept or reject. So if that's not possible, how would we vote? I mean, if.
We can say, we make a motion to approve the site plan as it is with no stipulations. Or we could say, we make a motion to approve the site plan with no semis in the alley, which is the other thing they asked for, and leave that out. Like, we can make a motion to change it.
Well, he's not going to have any semis. He says it's just a 48-foot truck once a week.
Well, you gotta, that's the trailer, so you gotta add the, it's a semi.
Okay.
I don't want you.
But they asked that they not be in the alley.
Okay.
He said they won't.
He already said, they're pulling the lot.
Yeah.
Chief, is that, is that enforceable?
As far as taking a right-hand turn, at this point, no. And I guess my only question would be, how are we going to police that? I mean, we have a lot of traffic issues that we heard about tonight that will take precedent over no right turns out of subway. To be honest with you, I'm not trying to downplay the concern to the neighborhood, I'm not. But, you know, that would have to be a different enforcement action. But, but as far as, you know, the police department's concerned, it would just be a matter of seeing somebody, see somebody turn right when during, you know, us patrolling on Monroe.
What if they lived on Monroe? Or they went to Subway?
Correct.
Oh, no, no, that's, that's my point, that's my point too.
I want to turn right.
Right. You know, it's going to happen. We know it's going to happen. We, I mean, how, how many, how many no right turns do we see? Any road you travel, people go right anyway. And it's going to happen. But you're asking me how I'm going to enforce it? If the officer happened to see it when he's driving down Monroe, then we'd have to have something in place where, you know, it's enforceable, so.
So we're putting, like, we have to put up a sign, or like, what, what do we have to do?
We'd put up a sign, you have to have an ordinance. But again, it's, like I said, if the board.
Why don't we just pass it without that stipulation in it?
I don't.
That's the simplest thing to do.
That's the board's option.
If we amended it and removed that recommendation, would the ZPA, ZBA still approve the site plan?
It's already done.
It's passing, it's in our.
Have to go back to that.
It's in our court now.
Would they have passed it with, without it? I guess it's my question.
It doesn't matter.
They're just a recommending body.
They're recommending.
I understand that.
And if we want to vote it without it, it's, it's all sitting here with us.
To answer your question, they did not take a vote without those stipulations. They just, they approved it only with.
Would they have not approved it absent?
Nobody can predict.
No, we have no idea.
That would influence our vote. I mean, at least mine.
There's no way of telling that, because they, because they didn't vote that way. So I, I can't.
They did take a vote.
They took two votes last night, if I may point out. The first vote was without that stipulation, and then failed number five of the.
Switching of facts.
So they did take that vote without that stipulation and failed. It passed later when they put that stipulation.
But that stipulation's not enforceable, is what you're telling me?
Not at this point.
And I think, you know, to be fair, the neighborhood is concerned about safety, and that is always a big concern. Maybe we pass this and there's a way to deal, and Chief, you can speak to this, we deal with safety in another way, with what we've discussed earlier, the possibility of speed bumps, the possibility, you know, that type of thing. I think what we're seeing here is a growth in our, not just now, but over the last 20 years, the traffic on, on War Memorial. And I don't know that there's any way to stop that.
Well, like I mentioned before, we have a handful of cut-through traffic, one being Monroe. And, you know, you talk about how developments impacted that. We saw a huge increase when Sherman's opened up here. I know that, because we, we stopped a lot of them and found out they were going to Sherman's. So, you know, as development comes, comes traffic, and comes enforcement. So, you know, I think Monroe already is a main vein of cut-through traffic, whether you're going from War Drive to Sherman's or War Drive to bypass the lot, the light on Prospect, they're hitting Lake, taking a right. I mean, I can give you about handfuls scenarios just on that road. That's why we drop the speed trailer off there all the time, and we do numerous enforcement days from our traffic car. We have a dedicated traffic car. So I'm not sure if, you know, Subway, of course, is going to add traffic, but it's already a heavily traveled road. And I understand the residents would not, they don't want any more. But I guarantee you that Subway's going to get developed, and when somebody gets their sandwich and comes to the drive-through, and they live over, over on Lake, or they're going to go right. And if you're asking me a percentage of how we're going to enforce that, it's going to be very minimal. It's going to be just a stroke of luck, where if an officer is there and we have an ordinance in place, basically stating that you cannot go right there, then they'll do it. You know, as far as, is it, will there be a ticket? Officer discretion. So, you know, I, I think that we're starting to micromanage Subway here, even though I, I understand what the neighbors are saying. But again, it's already a heavily traveled road, and I'm not trying to downplay that. But as business-friendly as we are, and the development's only going to continue there, I think it's going to, all, all those roads, Atlantic, I think they're all going to increase. But anyway, I hope, that's my opinion, that's my stance on it. You know, I just, the enforcement is going to be minimal, so...
So, would we move to amend, removing that stipulation? Why, why would we vote on something we can't enforce?
Can we make a motion now?
Sure.
Chair?
Let's make a motion to approve the site plan with removing the no right-hand turns out of the parking lot.
We have the motion already.
Right now, the motion on the floor is to approve the site plan. There are no stipulations on this particular site plan right now, because the board has not put any stipulations on it. So, I believe the board would need to, and Council, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong. First, the board would need to make amendments to put additional stipulations on.
That, that, that would be true. I didn't understand that the motion was made that way, but I, I take your...
It just says approve the site plan. It does not say anything about the ZBA stipulations.
Right. And typically, that would mean to approve the recommendation of the ZBA, which had those conditions.
Okay.
So, I, I would like somebody to specifically make a motion to remove that condition.
That's why I asked my question a long time ago.
Well...
Okay, so, just so we're clear, then this, this motion approves only the site plan. If anyone wants any additional restrictions, they need to make that amendment.
Then that would be appropriate, yes.
And then we'll vote on the main motion as amended if there are any amendments offered.
Correct.
Okay, so we're still on the site plan. Any other discussion on the site plan?
I would like to make a motion. Can I do that?
Okay, go ahead.
To approve the site plan with a stipulation that delivery trucks are required to take a left turn on, out of the, they cannot go down Monroe. Left turn onto Monroe, and then onto War Memorial Drive.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, now, discussion on the amendment only.
How would we enforce it? Because it gets back to the enforcement question.
That's the owner. It's one truck, once a week.
Can you put, like, a sign? I mean, usually they have signs, trucks can't turn left, they have, you know, certain weight of trucks.
I'm sure they'll post it, but you're talking about one company. I'm sure they can internally cover that.
I mean, it's a phone call for me.
Yeah.
Just say, hey. And we're, and that's how close we are with those guys. I mean, we're one of their biggest accounts. They're out of Lincoln, Illinois. They're right, they're local as well. And we just tell them, when you come in here, you got to turn left.
Yeah.
It's pretty simple. It's simple in mind.
But it's a stipulation.
Right. Yeah, but because of us being the, the customer, we can kind of say, hey, you need to turn left on it.
Anyone else? Madam Clerk, call the roll on the amendment.
Trustee Carter?
Aye.
Trustee Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee DeBoer?
Aye.
All right. Any, any other discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, call the roll on the motion as amended.
Trustee Carter?
So...
Aye. This is, this is to approve the site plan with a stipulation that delivery trucks may only turn left. So, everything else on the site plan is...
Okay.
Trustee Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee DeBoer?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All that passes. Okay, next is approval of ordinance 2019-1597, an ordinance to propose the approval of an amendment to the Business Development District redevelopment plan, and establish a date for a parking hearing for the first amendment to the Peoria Heights Business Development District Number One. Trustee Kazam?
I make a motion to approve this ordinance 2019-1597.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, go ahead, Trustee Kazam.
I would like to invite Council to speak to this, please.
So, this first one is the amendment to the Business Development District that's existing to expand the district. We had a map at the last meeting. I don't see that we have a map, so I can't tell you the exact boundaries. But we're not approving that amendment tonight. All we're approving is the required public hearing, where all of that is aired, and everybody is invited to make comments, and it would, after the public hearing, then come back to the board for an actual vote to approve. So, really, all we're being asked to do is approve a public hearing 5:00 PM August 20th, 2019.
5:00 PM, August 20th.
Uh, that's a...
Yes.
Okay. Confused. Just, just for clarification to the board, this is for the BDD, and this is not the same thing as the hearing that I read out earlier on August 6th. This is for the BDD. The other one is for the TIF.
Okay.
All right. Any discussion on this? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Carter?
Aye.
Trustee Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee DeBoer?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. The next piece of business is approval of ordinance 2019-1598, an ordinance to propose, an ordinance to propose the approval of the Business Development District redeveloping plan, redevelopment plan, and establish a date for a public hearing for the Peoria Heights Business Development District Number Two. Trustee Kazam?
Okay, move to approve the ordinance 2019-1598.
And a second?
Again, Council, would you...
This is the new Business Services District, and I did not realize we were creating a second one. Is this the War Memorial?
We're expanding.
Correct, correct, south. Because the last one was an expansion of the existing district.
Yeah, this would be south of one, right?
Okay, got it.
To go down, down to Ward Drive.
So, this will be a second district that we're creating, so this is the new district?
Correct.
And again, this ordinance is not, we're not approving that district, we're just approving the public hearing, which this one will be right after the last public hearing, so it'll be August 20th at 5:30.
And this is occurring primarily because businesses have seen the success of the Business Development District here in the Heights, and how that they can work to their advantage. So, not Dustin nor I decided to bring this forth, but the businesses themselves wanted us to bring this to you. That's, that's why it's before you tonight. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Carter?
Aye.
Trustee Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee DeBoer?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. We would be at item 11, payment of the bills. I'd like, I would ask for a motion to pay the bills.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, any questions on any of the bills? Any discussion on the motion?
I did have a couple of questions on here. I am on page... Okay. First of all, my first question is, Stephanie, and I don't know if you know this off the top of your head, but if not, I would really like to see if you can give me an answer to it. But again, what are we putting out total village portion for health insurance? Do you know, per year?
Not off the top of my head, no.
And these payments that we're making out, are these monthly payments? Like, for example, the administration on the health insurance, are adding them all up to the other, you know, with all of them? Is this just our monthly payment on this? Like, you can just look, for example, on page one.
Yeah.
The 141190, is that just...
Yes, it's, it is labeled, and that is a monthly payment.
Okay. And then it's under each...
Yes, and each one is listed.
Each fund, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Is there any way that you could give me a total on that, just at some point? Just because I can't remember. I know we had talked about this in the past, about continuing to look at our health insurance and what we're paying out of the village portion, so...[1391.86]